All right, I will call our regular city council meeting of January 26, 2021 to order. If everyone could please join me in the pledge of allegiance, if you could put your camera on and unmute yourself and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republicans, for which we stand, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item is the open forum. I will pass it to administrative assistant Kelly to see if anyone is here for the open forum.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to remind residents that you can participate in our open forum live during the meeting. You can feel free to call the number of 612-861-0651, and we can patch you through live into the meeting and to make your comments. Residents can also contact me before meetings in calling my office at 612-861-9711, or email me at kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. And you can email your comments or leave a message, and we can have them read at the meeting as well. I currently do not have any callers, but if you want to give it a minute due to the delay, and I can let you know if we have anybody to submit. Mayor, you are currently muted.
Okay, am I unmuted now?
Yes.
I'm so sorry. I'm trying. My computer is, the screen is frozen, so I'm not quite sure. I'm trying to fix it. So I'm administrative assistant Winn. Is there anybody on the line?
I do not have anybody on the line.
Okay, we'll just wait a little bit longer, and then we can go to the next item. All right, I will close the open forum. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Thank you. The open forum is closed. I will move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the city council work session of January 12, 2021, the city council meeting of January 12, 2021. And if council members could just jump in, because my screen is still frozen and I'm not able to see folks. Thank you.
Council member Troutman, so moved.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you. The minutes have been moved by council member Troutman and seconded by council member Hayford O'Leary. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Supple.
Aye.
Council member Troutman.
Aye.
Council member Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
And council member Waylon.
Ayes.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The minutes have been approved. The next item is the presentation from the Richfield Foundation, where we get to learn more about the grants that they will be awarding. This is really exciting for us every single year. And we have Joanna Schindler and Scott Visdows with us from the Richfield Foundation, so welcome Joanna and Scott.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, yeah, we're really happy to be here tonight. My name is Joanna Schindler, and I'm the current chair of the Richfield Foundation. Just wondering, Kelly, are you sharing the PowerPoint I brought, or should I share that?
If you could go ahead and share that, that would be great.
Okay, we'll do. Just a moment. Okay. Thanks for your patience there for just a second. Can everyone see my screen? All right, if you can see my screen, I'm going to go ahead and get started. So the Richfield Foundation has a mission of successful kids, secure families, and strong community. And it is an organization that's just over 30 years old. And I understand, though I haven't been able to come to this meeting in other years, that the presentation of our grants each year is a really significant, important part of our year grant-making process. So I'm glad that we're able to be here tonight to do this with you. And I wanted to highlight that in 2020, Richfield Foundation granted out $48,765 to 20 organizations. Really exciting to be able to do that, because as you can see, we've been on a steady trajectory of growth for grant-making. But we doubled what we did in previous years, and that was because of a special grant from the Minnesota Disaster Relief Fund that allowed us to do some very specific COVID pandemic relief recovery grants. And I'll mention those in just a moment. We also were able to add to our cumulative grant-making over the last 30-something years with a total grants of $329,420 over the many years. We are a totally volunteer-run organization. Here's a list of our really wonderful board members that we have this year, and we're always happy to hear if there are other interested people who would like to join this volunteer board that really puts in the effort to help the Richfield community be stronger. This year, we had to pivot our annual fundraising. We usually do a wine event that generates most of the revenue that we are able to grant out the next year. And since we couldn't do that event in person, we pivoted and created a Giving Gratitude Week of fun and inspiration in support of the Richfield Foundation. And many people, individuals and businesses in the community gave to that. We raised about $15,000, and really excited that we were able to make that happen. This year, I mentioned Minnesota Disaster Relief Fund granted us $20,000, and we were able to do some additional fundraising. And I'll go through the list of grants we gave out in May first. We funded Children's Dental Services, Crossroads Panorama, Frasier School, La Casita Family Childcare, Loaves and Fishes, Local Roots, Meals on Wheels, Partnership Academy, Posters on Board, Senior Community Services, Sheridan Story, Tapestry, and Veep. And that was again in May, and we still were able to do our regular annual grant-making, which takes place in November each year. And this year, we were able to award grants to the following recipients for that: to Aon for support of residents living in Seasons Park, the Assistance League for Close Up for Kids, our school reads, Links to Learning and Smart Start programs, to Cornerstone for shelter upgrades for children and infants, to Crossroads Panorama for supplies for their anti-bullying program, to Friends of Woodlake Nature Center for pairs of youth snowshoes, to Loaves and Fishes for free nutritious meals at two locations, to Meals on Wheels for frozen meals safe for pandemic deliveries, to Oasis for youth for a traveling program that provides resources to homeless youth, to Partnership Academy, an engagement motivation program for distance learning students, People with Capes for emergency basic needs expenses for participants, Portico Health Net for health insurance enrollment services, and Senior Community Services for in-home chore and maintenance services for low-income seniors. And that is the end of my slideshow, but I will also add that as part of the Giving Gratitude Week, we were able to to also create some great videos with our grant recipients, and those are available on our Facebook page. If you'd like to see some snapshots of the programs that Richfield Foundation has been able to give grants to in the past. Scott, I don't know if you'd like to add anything else. I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know you're here too.
No, no, I'm just here to be eye candy. You take the show. You're in charge. Thanks, Joanna.
Wonderful. Well, that's all I've got. Just thank you so much to the community. Thank you to Mayor and the city council for your support and your advocacy for the Richfield Foundation programs. And we hope that we can keep that partnership strong and keep being able to make annual grant-making for our city. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that presentation. Joanna, thank you for coming. Scott, any questions from our council members about the amazing work that the Richfield Foundation is doing? Council member Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to say thank you and welcome back to the Richfield Foundation. And Ms. Schindler, I just want to thank you guys so much. I'm so excited to see the amount of money we are able to give doubled and see the list of institutions that do incredible work in Richfield. Folks like Veep that have been doing that incredible work for generations and decades, and folks like Sheridan Story that are relatively newer. But in terms of combating, you know, hunger for students in Richfield, just incredible work. And so thank you guys for doing that work. One of the funnest things I've ever done in Richfield is sitting on that foundation board. So I miss it and I miss you guys, but I want to thank you guys for coming here, and please keep up some good work.
Thank you. Council member Supple.
I just want to echo that gratitude. Thank you so much, and thank you to all the volunteers and all the people in the community that have supported the foundation. You do phenomenal work. Thank you.
Council member Waylon.
Yeah, I was just going to say quick too that we'll echo everything others have said, and certainly like reach out to us when you have. I know there's been a lot of adapting this year, and when you guys adapted for the fundraiser, that you had reached out to us to help for donations and stuff, and we are more than happy to help support the foundation. So we appreciate the great work that you do, and certainly let us know anytime there's ways that we can support you.
I'd just like to say, it's so great to be able. I have a lot of people that ask me, how can I contribute? How can I help? And just to send them straight to the Richfield Foundation and just say, if you want your biggest bang for your buck, this is our community-based foundation, where you can dedicate your time, your resources, your donations, not only to our community foundation, but also to all the different organizations serving so many, a range of families of Richfield residents here in our own backyard. One of the people that contacted me was a guy that I grew up with as a kid in Janzil, Wisconsin, and his mom grew up in Richfield, and now he lives in Richfield. And we went to school together, grade school together, and he said, I want to give back to the community in honor of my mom and my family. Where can I go? And that was just one little example. But we really appreciate the leadership of our foundation, our board members, and all the organizations that the foundation serves. Any other comments or questions from folks? All right. Thank you so much, Scott and Joanna, for coming and presenting, and we're really excited to see all the great efforts that are being funded through the foundation.
Wonderful. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Council member Waylon, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Council member Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made to approve the agenda by council member Waylon and seconded by council member Supple. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Supple.
Aye.
Council member Troutman. Council member Troutman. Thank you. Council member Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Council member Waylon.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. The next item is the consent calendar, and that will go to our city manager, Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved, and no further action is necessary for these items. On tonight's consent calendar is item A, consider the adoption of resolutions authorizing the joint powers agreement between the Metropolitan Airports Commission and the City of Richfield for the ownership and maintenance of 77th Street underpass improvements. And two, temporary easement agreement between the Metropolitan Airports Commission and the City of Richfield for property located near 77th Street and Longfellow Avenue. Item B, consider the approval of the purchase of a 2021 Versavac 1,000 PDE trailer-mounted vacuum hydro excavation unit from Flexible Pipe to accompany in the sum of $162,610, including a trade-in. Item C, consider approval of a resolution approving a joint powers agreement for a distracted driving vehicle program. And item D, consider approval of a second reading of an ordinance amending City Code subsection 721.03 related to connections and discharges to the stormwater system, and approval of a resolution authorizing summary publication. And finally, item E, consider a resolution designating an official newspaper for 2021. And I submit all of these for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
Thank you, city manager Rodriguez. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Council member Waylon, so moved.
Council member Troutman, second.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been moved by council member Waylon and seconded by council member Troutman. Are there any comments or questions on the calendar items? Council member Waylon.
I think it is the right move, a good move, and not overly complicated, but just noting that we don't often have second readings of ordinances on the consent calendar. I was just wondering if staff could give us the one-sentence summary of that for the public to know the ordinance that we're passing.
Yes, council member Waylon, and my apologies. This is just, Director Asher is here, so I'll let her address the question.
I was just looking, council member Waylon, in the city council, I was looking for the staff report on. But yeah, so the change to the ordinance is related to illegal discharges into our storm sewer system as pollutants to downstream waters. And this particular change is simply to add chloride and salt deicers to the list of identified contaminants. So I mean, it's in line with what the municipal practices have been in the city for many years. We've been reducing our salt use for the water quality downstream, and so this would just apply to all properties, all residents, all commercial properties that city.
Thank you, Director Asher. Any other comments or questions on the consent calendar? All right, analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take?
Mayor.
Go ahead, council member Troutman.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'll just be really brief, but I just wanted to highlight and lift up our papers of record in the Sun Current and the Star Commune, but especially the Sun Current, just what a resource that is to our community. And in recent years, they've switched to a pay-based subscription online. And I just want to encourage folks to make, it's a very modest investment for folks that are able to subscribe to their local paper. It gives you lots of great information. If you ever feel overwhelmed or at all discouraged about national politics, just, I want to encourage folks to get involved in local politics, and a great way to do that is to support your local paper. So I just wanted to give that plug.
Absolutely. Thank you for lifting that up, council member Troutman. Any other comments or questions on the consent calendar? All right, analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Supple.
Aye.
Council member Troutman.
Aye.
Council member Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Council member Waylon.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to, item number five, goes to council member Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a public hearing to consider the approval of a noise variance permit for Woodlake dewatering as part of the Woodlake Lift Station Improvement Project. Summary from staff on this, the Woodlake Lift Station Improvement Project requires the running of a generator and pumps for dewatering purposes 24 hours a day for the installation of this project's wet well. The wet well for this project will be installed to a depth of roughly eight feet past the current groundwater table. These pumps will need to be run at all hours of the day and night to sufficiently draw the water table down to allow for a successful installation. A 14-day noise variance has already been authorized by the city manager per city code preceding this public hearing, so the project start was not delayed. The project expects the pumps will run for three to four weeks total. However, they're requesting an additional one-month noise variance. They do not need to revisit this permit in case there are delays. During these weeks, there will be a little bit more noise in the area. However, this area is a commercialized area and not residential, and disruptions or issues are not expected. To help mitigate noise, the pump subcontractor has built an enclosure around the generator to try to make it as quiet as possible. So I don't know if Ms. Asher or Ms. Rodriguez has something to add?
Mayor, council member Hayford O'Leary, I just would like to add that we did issue that noise variance in advance to keep them on schedule, but I would just note that they haven't started the dewatering because of XL has been delaying them with some of their work. So if you went out there to check it and didn't hear it, that's because it hasn't started yet. And I don't know if Mike would like to add anything. Mike's our assistant utility superintendent.
Yeah, they'll be starting, they'll be setting up the dewatering operations this week and getting ready to go into this weekend, next week to start dewatering. And in all reality, the being directly adjacent to 494, the freeway noise is likely going to be much louder than the dewatering operation itself.
Could you clarify, physically, where is this pump? There wasn't like a map or anything.
Yeah, absolutely. I can, actually, I can share my screen quick, and I'll just show on a map here. So yeah, here, this is, if everybody can see my screen, this is Panera Bread here, 494 down here. So the lift station is located right within this residence, this dot right here, this orange dot. So yeah, highly commercialized, directly adjacent to 494.
Yep. All right, thank you. Are there any other questions for the rest of the council? Okay, we will open the public hearing. I don't know if administrative assistant Winn wants to give the instructions again in case anybody is looking to call in for the public hearing.
Thank you, council member Hayford O'Leary. We do encourage residents to participate in our public hearings live during our meetings. You can call 612-861-0651, and you can be patched through into the meeting to express your comments. You can also contact me before meetings if you would like to have your public hearing comments read during the meeting, if you would not like to do them yourself. You can call me at 612-861-9711, or you can email your comments to kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. I currently do not have anybody on the line.
Okay, so is there anybody hanging on for about a minute or so? While we're waiting, the Woodlake Lift Station was kind of a misnomer. I guess I thought it was close to Woodlake, so I was more concerned about the noise now seeing where it is.
We actually used to call it the Don Pablo's Lift Station, but obviously Don Pablo's isn't there anymore. Then we thought we'd call it the Panera Lift Station, but what if Panera leaves? So we just took the drains Woodlake, we started calling it the Woodlake Lift Station.
That makes sense.
I still do not have anybody on the line, so if you'd like to close the public hearing, you can do so.
Thank you. I move that we close the public hearing.
Council member Waylon, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion to close the public hearing has been made by council member Hayford O'Leary and seconded by council member Waylon. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote to close the hearing?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Supple.
Aye.
Council member Troutman.
Aye.
Council member Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Council member Waylon.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
Okay, I move that we approve the noise variance permit for Woodlake dewatering as part of the Woodlake Lift Station Improvement Project.
Council members Supple, I'll second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by council member Hayford O'Leary and seconded by council member Supple. Any additional questions or comments from council members on this item? All right, analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Council member Supple.
Aye.
Council member Troutman.
Aye.
Council member Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Council member Waylon.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item will go to council member Supple.
Thank you. This item is to have a public hearing to consider approval of a modification to the redevelopment plan and the approval of a tax increment financing plan for 2020-2 Tax Increment Finance District ME. The Richfield HRA approved a preliminary agreement with PLH Associates Construction Services LLC, now PLH Associates 6605 First LLC, the developer, to explore the redevelopment of 101 66th Street East on July 20, 2020. The HRA committed to explore the use of Tax Increment Financing, or TIF, to help make the redevelopment of the blighted site financially feasible. Since approval of the preliminary development, Ellers Incorporated has reviewed the project and found that it is not feasible without assistance. An independent evaluation by LHB Corporation has determined that the property meets the statutory definition of a blighted site and thereby would qualify as a redevelopment TIF district. On January 19, the HRA considered and approved a contract for private development. On January 19th, the HRA considered and approved a contract for private development modification to the redevelopment plan and a tax increment financing plan for the 2020-2 TIF District ME. The approved contract requires the developer to make the improvements totaling at least Improvements will consist of 42 apartment units and approximately 1,300 square feet of ground floor commercial space. In accordance with the city's inclusionary housing policy, the developer will reserve 20% of the apartment units for households earning 60%, 60% or less of the area median income. The contract requires these units be distributed proportionally among the various unit types. In order to make the project financially feasible, the contract commits the HRA to provide the developer with a maximum of $971,070 in tax increment finance. Tonight, the council is asked to consider the modification to the redevelopment plan and tax increment plan that were approved by the HRA on January 19th. The modification and plan are attached to this report and contain the following. The modification to the existing Richfield Redevelopment Plan, including a map update indicating, or excuse me, identifying the 2020-2 ME TIF District and a short text passage citing the new district. A summary of the HRA and city's authority to create such a district, a description of its classification as a redevelopment district requiring that more than 50% of the existing buildings are structurally substandard, an identification of the original net tax capacity that the base taxes will be calculated on, those taxes will be distributed to all the local taxing jurisdictions, as is, was the case prior to the establishment of the TIF District. $5,815,545 as the maximum TIF that could theoretically be collected in the district over its maximum lifespan of 26 years, the types of uses eligible for expenditure, and the but-for analysis concluding that the resulting redevelopment would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment. When the TIF plan identifies the maximum amount of tax increment that could be generated, the maximum expenditure on certain eligible uses, it does not commit the use of these funds. That commitment is contained in the approved contract for private redevelopment, which sets forth the following uses of TIF funds. 90% of the available TIF up to the maximum of $971,070 to the, to the developer as a TIF pay-as-you-go note to assist them in funding TIF qualifying expenses. 10% of the TIF collected will be retained by the Richfield HRA for the reimbursement of expenses in administering this district. Under current assumptions, this amount of TIF could be provided to the developer in as little as 12 years, after which time the district would be decertified. And at this point, um, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Community Development Director Melissa Paleman.
Thank you, Councilmembers Supple, members of the council. I don't really have anything to add except that Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers is here tonight to help walk you through the plan if you have any questions. Um, otherwise, I'm happy to try and answer any questions as well.
Thank you. Any, um, comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Um, just a, a comment that I wanted to say that, um, of course, the sites received a lot of attention. I've heard from a lot of residents in my ward, uh, concerned about the lack of progress and the condition. So I, I really appreciate having this report right in the packet showing the condition of the buildings that are to be replaced. I think it is really helpful to see how bad it is and hopefully how good by comparison the replacement will be.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions from council members? Or Councilmember Wayland?
Um, I was looking for the exact chart and realized it was maybe in the, um, HRA packet from last week, but the, could you, um, just summarize again the, one of the things I really appreciate about this, and I know it, there's not that many different sized units in this development, but that the, uh, 60% AMI income restricted units are distributed evenly among the different sizes, um, according to the, the number of them in the, the unit as a whole. Um, and I think, I know there's financial challenges to do that on projects with much larger apartments, but appreciate having that, um, precedent that that is possible in some cases and would like to see it in more. But, um, I, if I'm remembering right, that the chart, um, listed out kind of expected, but that it, it sounded like there may be some, it was maybe still up in the air whether or not there would be two-bedroom units? Um, if staff could just speak to that?
Councilmember Wayland, yes. Um, in this particular development, there are, um, the, the units, there's not a wide variety of units, um, but there are a couple of two-bedroom units and then some one, larger one-bedrooms, um, that are, that approach that size. So the way that this is distributed in the contract, there will be, uh, four studios that are reserved 60%, uh, three of the typical one-bedrooms, and then one of the large one-bedrooms that unit exceeds 1,000 square feet, and then one ADA accessible unit that will also be reserved at the 60%. The contract does specify that, um, a two-bedroom unit can be substituted, uh, for any of those specified units.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, I just was happy to see that. I know that's part of the, the ongoing discussion around the inclusionary housing policy. So I was glad to see in this, in this instance that we could do that.
Thank you. Additional questions from council members? All right, Councilmember Supple, if you want to conduct the hearing?
I would like to move that we open the public hearing. And so, um, Assistant Nguyen, can you explain how people can call in, please?
Of course. Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Again, we encourage residents to participate, uh, at our public hearings for the city council. You can call 612-861-0651, and we can patch you through live to the meeting, uh, where you can state your comments or concerns. You can also contact me ahead of meetings at 612-861-9711 and leave a message, or you can email your comments to kwynn@richfieldmn.gov. I actually have a call coming in, so give me just a moment here. Thank you, caller. Can you state your name and your address? You'll have three minutes. Go ahead.
Caller, are you there? You can go ahead.
Yes. Okay. Can you hear me? Uh, this is Julie Lipinski. Yes, yes, this is Julie Lipinski, and I live at 6621 Stevens, so right across the street from this development. And one question that I would have, I just wanted to find out more about is, you know, we knew these buildings would need to be removed when the project was approved in 2018. So I'm kind of puzzled by the blight thing because they were not in good condition back then, but even if they were, it would be known that as part of the financial plan that those buildings would need to be removed. But basically, my question is, because of the financial challenges that have been ongoing, obviously, the TIF is a way to help with that. But I am wondering, how does the planned unit development resolution, which was attached to the October, um, uh, 2020 minutes, um, interact with this TIF redevelopment district? Is it the same, the, um, the resolutions remain the same, the TIF redevelopment district doesn't really change that in any way? Uh, and the reason I ask that question, because as you know, neighbors have had many concerns, and just want to be sure that there's follow-through on all the things that were in that planned unit development, because that was a result of a lot of feedback from neighbors. So I would just like to ask that question and hear what you have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll finish up the public hearing and then we'll come back to staff to get answers. Is there, are there any other callers on the line?
I do not have any other callers.
All right, well, we'll give it a minute and wait and see if someone else calls in. Are there any other callers?
No, I do not have any other callers. Thank you.
And I will move to close the public hearing.
Councilmember Troutman, I'll second.
Thank you. Councilmember Supple has made the motion to close the public hearing and seconded by Councilmember Troutman. Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote to close the hearing?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The public hearing has been closed.
Um, I was wondering if Assistant Director Paleman would like to respond to the question that was asked. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Lipinski. That's a great question. I'll answer first, um, the question about the planned unit development approvals, and then I will ask, um, Rebecca Kurtz, maybe to follow up on the blight finding and the specifics of that. But the short answer to the question about the, the, um, planned unit development approvals is that this does not affect that. The blight finding and the establishment of this redevelopment district are strictly related to the tax increment financing, uh, the financial portion of the project. The PUD land use approvals remain intact, um, and this does not change them. So the stipulations that were in there, that the, um, neighborhood negotiated with the developer and was concerned about are, will still be there. Rebecca, if you could help, um, with the blight findings?
Yes, absolutely. And thank you, Melissa. Rebecca Kurtz with Ellers and Associates. We are the city's municipal advisor that helped facilitate, um, the creation of the TIF plan and the documents related to that. With, um, a redevelopment TIF district, one of the requirements is that a blight finding be completed. Um, it does have two parts, and one is that the parcel is covered or has man-made improvements on that. And so that has been completed for this, um, this development with the buildings and this, the man-made improvements on the parcel. The second part does require an inspection to confirm that the site or the building is substandard, as was mentioned in the staff report. If there are multiple buildings, more than 50% have to meet that substandard requirement. Um, regarding the timing of this, uh, the tax increment law does require that this finding be completed and that the actual TIF district be established prior to the demolition of the buildings. So while we understand, um, and have known for some time that those buildings were considered blighted and that they would need to be demolished, we needed to wait until, um, action from tonight and approval of the TIF district before the buildings can actually come down. The reason for that is that until the TIF district is established, we cannot, um, expend TIF funds. So had the buildings been demolished prior to this evening, we would not be able to use the tax increment to help reimburse for that cost of, of demolition of them.
Thank you. Um, I would like to move that we adopt a resolution approving a modification to the redevelopment plan for the Richfield Redevelopment Project and approving a tax increment financing plan for the 2020-2 Tax Increment Finance District ME.
Hayford O'Leary, second.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Supple and seconded by Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Are there any other questions or comments from council members on this item? All right, um, Analyst Martinez-Govina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item will go to Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item for consideration is consideration of the approval of a resolution pertaining to, uh, filing of the pay equity report with Minnesota Management and Budget Department. Uh, the city has completed its work on the pay equity report for the period, uh, ending in December 31st, 2020, and required the mayor's signature before submission to the state of Minnesota. The data compiled for this report is done in accordance with the strict standards determined by the Minnesota Management and Budget Department and is reported in a summary format for submission to the state. Compliance is determined on passing a underpayment ratio, salary range test, and exceptional service pay test. The preliminary results indicate that the city is in compliance with the salary range test as of 12/31/2020. However, the state will make official determination after the report is analyzed. Uh, there, um, just defer to staff. Is there, is there any, anything that, uh, staff wants to add?
Uh, Councilmember Troutman, uh, other city council members. We are obligated to, um, uh, submit every year, as the staff report says. It's a very deep, it takes a lot of work, our HR manager, uh, Krista Guzman has been working on this a lot. So, once we get the mayor's signature to submit, then we'll know for sure, um, if we're in compliance. And of course, that's what we seek, um, if otherwise... But at this point, believe we are and would appreciate, um, proceeding at this point.
Very good. Well, um, then I would move that we adopt a resolution pertaining to the filing of the pay equity report with the Minnesota Management and Budget Department.
Supple, I'll second that.
Thank you. The motion has been made by Councilmember Troutman and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Any comments or questions on the item from council members? Councilmember Wayland?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, um, if Director Demetchenko, if you'd be willing to explain, um, parts of this seem fairly straightforward, uh, specifically like that were above 100 on the underpayment ratio seems really good. Um, but the, some of the language of it, uh, it seems less, uh, easily accessible. If you could just give, I, I know there's a ton of detail, but if you could try and give like the two-minute summary of what this report is saying, I would really appreciate it.
Uh, Councilmember Wayland, well, I apologize. I had over in detail, um, because we just were, um, actually gathered all the data, um, just the end of last week. That's why it's been kind of a rush, um, to get it to you. But what I would be hap, more than happy to do with you and the other council members is, um, provide you some more detail, um, either next week or as soon as possible. And I think actually, HR manager Guzman might be, um, the best person to talk you through this. Um, like you pointed out, it's really detailed. There's a lot of, um, nomenclature and whatnot that can be a little bit, um, uh, just, uh, it's hard to understand. Um, but there's a lot of numbers that go into this, um, and, uh, positions get rated and have point allocations. So, um, we just feed it all into the, um, system and it, then we kind of see where we're at from there. But if you'd like, I'd be ha, more than happy to, um, respond.
Mayor, could I jump in real quick?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, thank you, Assistant, uh, Manager Demetchenko. I would just maybe add one question that I had as I was looking at that with, uh, with, along with my colleagues. There were parts of it that I, I, I will confess, I struggled to understand in detail. But one question that I had is while it was clear we're in compliance with the standard, I was curious if any of the data revealed opportunities for us to grow in the area of pay equity or revealed any, any vulnerability or just, just opportunities for growth. So if, if, when you look at that and you send that email around, I'd be very curious to know if, uh, if there was any fruitful information that we, I mean, it's good to have that accountability, but if there were op- growth opportunities for us.
Absolutely, Councilmember Troutman. What we'll do, once we submit this report and get the, um, and then get the state's, uh, response to know for, um, that we're in compliance. But, you know, we do this anyway. We look at it because we do have certain employee groups that are more female dominated than male dominated. Um, and so we do on a regular basis, do some analyzing of those, uh, positions to make sure that, um, they're, you know, aligning and that we are being equitable. And if we see anything, um, we absolutely will, we'll do some more research. These and, um, make adjustments if they're warranted, especially if it seems apparent that there should be some adjustments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from council members? I'd just like to thank our staff who, um, put so much work into preparing this report. It does seem to be arduous and complicated. Um, and obviously it's an extremely important issue. We know pay equity issues, um, are pretty big nationally, especially for women and women of color. So this is a very important topic, but thank you, Assistant City Manager Demetchenko and to HR, um, staff Guzman for doing this work and everyone who contributed to it. And we look forward to the update. Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez. Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item is, um, the consideration of representatives to serve as the 2021 liaisons to various local, regional and state organizations and city boards and commissions. So members of the city council serve as the city's representatives on various local, regional and state organizations and city boards and commissions. Each year, the council appoints these representatives. So, um, I'll, I'm gonna open it. I know there's a motion to designate the appointments, but before we do that, I just wanna, um, discuss it because I think we might have some changes. But in addition to the work that we do with the work sessions and the city council meetings, we're also, um, liaisons or representatives of the city on, on various organizations. And I just wanna thank all of our staff who lead the boards and commissions locally for, and as well, um, to all of our commission members who help us lead here in Richfield. And, um, to the staff who helped us figure out, um, kind of what, what, um, type of cadence we need for our liaisons and, um, to the council members for looking at their schedules and figuring out what's the best fit, um, for all of us. So I'm just going to, um, review the list and then open it up for discussion before the motion is made. So we have for metro cities, I have, um, the representative is Councilmember Hayford O'Leary with an alternate Councilmember Troutman. Then I have the League of Minnesota Cities, the representative is Councilmember Troutman. And, uh, the, oh, I'm sorry. Do I have you, Councilmember Troutman, as the alternate or the representative? For the League of Minnesota Cities, you're the representative, is that correct? Oh, sorry. Can you hear me, Councilmember Troutman? Oh, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. I, I, I was on mute and I have the, the document in my Kindle and so it's modified the, the formatting a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, I'm seeing that too on mine. Um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, do you know, um, if we discussed having you as an alternate or representative? I mean, I think for this one, it doesn't really matter because really for both the League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities, if any council member can go, um, you know, it's open to all of us. So if there's no opposition, I'll just make, um, Councilmember Troutman the liaison. And the alternate is Hay, uh, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Is that all right? But I think we all attend these regardless. All right. Thank you. The Noise Oversight Committee, we have Assistant City Manager Pam Demetchenko as a representative and then Ward Three, Councilmember Ben Wayland as the alternate. Um, and then I'm going to skip the transportation related ones because I want to open that one up for discussion, just for a few clarification items, and then I'll go to a couple others. So for the Richfield School District, um, it's Mayor Regan Gonzalez with Councilmember Mary Supple as the alternate. Foul Board, we have Councilmember Troutman and Count, as a liaison and Councilmember Wayland, um, as the alternate. Is that, um, all right for Councilmember Troutman and Wayland for Foul Board? Great. And then Councilmember Supple, are you cool being the alternate for the school district? Great. Thank you. Southwest Cable Commission, um, Mayor Regan Gonzalez is the representative as well as City Manager Rodriguez. And then the alternate is, um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Is that all right, Councilmember Hayford? All right. Great. Thank you. Um, then we have the, uh, Richfield Community Human Services Planning Council and the representative will be Councilmember Supple with the alternate being Mayor Regan Gonzalez. How does that sound, Councilmember Supple? All right. Advisory Board of Health will be Mayor Regan Gonzalez and then alternate, uh, Councilmember Supple. Are you good with that, Councilmember Supple? And I'll just have to reach back out to staff. That one is a tough one because, um, it does, um, inner, it does overlap with our HRA meeting. So, um, that one can be difficult to attend. But I'll reach out to staff and see if that is an okay assignment and if not, we can change later. Um, Arts Commission, I have the liaison being Councilmember Supple and the alternate being Councilmember Troutman. How does that sound? Good? All right. Civil Service Commission is Mayor Regan Gonzalez and Kelly Nguyen for our staff liaison. Community Services Commission, we have Councilmember Wayland as the representative and then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary as the alternate. Does that sound right? Great. Thank you. Friendship C Commission, we have Councilmember Supple as the representative and then the alternate is Councilmember Troutman. Is that all right? Yep. Great. Thank you. And then, let's see, Planning Commission, I'll skip and come back to Transportation Commission as well. Richfield Historical Society, the representative will be Councilmember Supple with the alternate as Councilmember Wayland. Does that sound all right? Okay. And then beyond the Yellow Ribbon Committee will be Mayor Regan Gonzalez and the alternate Councilmember Troutman. And then we have the Sustainability Commission, Councilmember Wayland as the liaison and then Councilmember Troutman as the alternate. Does that sound good? All right. Great. Now we'll go back to, um, the transportation related ones. So we had a mix of folks. I did check in with staff and I do think that staff is requesting, um, that whoever sit on the 494 corridor commission also sit on the transportation commission. Um, and so I just wanna go to City Manager Rodriguez. Do you, uh, prefer that we have kind of one person for all of those, uh, transportation related commissions?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. So the Airport to 169, 494 Policymaker Advisory Committee, the PAC, I think it's helpful for the, the two council members that sit on that PAC to also be on the various transportation commissions and the alliance. Um, so if that is possible, I think that would be helpful because you're, you're getting information from the various groups. Plus, we are working, uh, with our neighbors on that and our other stakeholders. And they are on the other groups like the 494 Corridor Commission and also the 35W Alliance. So I think that would be helpful.
Okay. So this actually might work out just fine then, um, because I know, I'll just kind of discuss them all together and then we can hash it all out together. So I believe that Councilmember Hayford O'Leary was gonna be the representative for the 35 Solutions Alliance. And then, um, Councilmember Troutman would be the liaison for the 494 Corridor Commission. So if, and then for Transportation Commission, was that Councilmember Hayford?
Uh, that was what we discussed.
Okay. Um, so would that work then? And Councilmember Troutman, is that you are still interested in being on the 494 Corridor Commission?
Yeah.
Okay. So actually, does that work fine then, um, City Manager Rodriguez? Essentially, it would be Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and then, uh, Councilmember Troutman on the PAC. And, um, he, uh, Councilmember Troutman would be on the 494 Corridor Commission. And then Councilmember Hayford O'Leary would be Transportation 35W Solutions, um, and the PAC.
So Councilmember O'Leary and Councilmember Troutman then would be on the PAC, correct?
Correct. Cause it would be in alignment with, um, the representatives on, uh, diff- on the 494 Corridor Commission, um, on the PAC as well.
Yes. Yes. I, I think that makes sense. Thank you.
Does that sound okay to Councilmember Troutman and Hayford O'Leary?
I, I think that, I think that sounds okay. Um, we, we serve, we serve at the pleasure of the, of the city. So we, we have an embarrassment of riches, um, when it comes to, uh, our new colleagues. Yeah, that takes his confidence be both on the Planning Commission and the Transportation Commission, I think. Yeah, my, um, so, so yeah, I think that would, that would be, that would be great.
Okay, Councilmember Supple, I see your hand is raised.
Yes. I was just wondering, um, who the, um, alternate would be to the I-35W Alliance? If, if Councilmember Troutman is the representative?
I was just gonna ask about the alternate. So actually, my understanding would be that, um, we're making the change so that Councilmember Hayford O'Leary would be the representative on the 35W Solutions. Is that correct, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Yes.
Okay. Now, City Manager Rodriguez, I'm more than happy to serve as alternate on these, um, because I know that Councilmember Troutman and Hayford O'Leary are, you know, taking the roles as the, as, um, the liaisons. Or do you think staff would prefer that it be one, you know, the other, the other council member is the alternate?
No, I think if you, if the primary is, uh, the two council members that are also serving on the PAC, I think that's fine.
And then the alternate role would be, are you fine with me being the alternate or would you want that?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. So I will be the alternate then, um, for, so I'll just repeat what I have here. And thank you folks for just kind of going through this. It's, um, just wanna make sure that it's efficient and makes sense for both staff and council, um, and that council has a capacity. So for the 35W Solutions, I have the representative is Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Um, I will be the alternate. 494 Corridor Commission will be, um, Councilmember Troutman. I'm happy to be the alternate as well. Um, again, just because I know those are somewhat of a heavy lift. Um, and then we have the PAC, which is not in this list, but it, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary and Councilmember Troutman will be the representatives. I'm happy to be an alternate. And then we have the Transportation Commission, um, as the liaison will be Hay, uh, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. And right, are you fine, Councilmember Troutman, to be the liaison for that or would you like, or the alternate? Or would you like me to be the alternate? For the Transportation Commission? Oh, and you're on mute. You're still mute.
Sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be, be, the alternate.
Great. Thank you. So liaison for the Transportation Commission is, um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary with the alternate as Councilmember Troutman.
My one, my one question is when we had talked previously, I was not going to be on the Planning Commission. Has that changed or is that?
You know, I can take the Planning Commission because of the way that we're splitting up some of these assignments. So that actually leaves me, so I'm happy to be, um, the liaison to the Planning Commission. If, I don't know what other folks think.
I will just
Uh huh. Go ahead.
I will just add as the, the previous liaison with the Planning Commission, because of the formal nature of it, um, all of the commission members are up on the, um, up front and you are just listening. And so it is not exactly, uh, the same as another liaison position. And, um, when it was in person was good to be there. Now that it's not, um, you kind of follow up as needed.
That makes sense. I'm happy to serve in that, um, position, Councilmember Troutman, since you'll be on the 494 Corridor Commission and the PAC as well.
No, well, I, you know, if, um, if it's, if it's serving, we could be a little more flexible. And if I wa- I, I, I wanna participate and do it in, in good faith. But if we can re- review it, um, and that's, and that's okay. I think.
Yeah, I know that that's what folks, I know some council, I know, um, council members would do that as well as kind of just follow up and watch the, the YouTube immediately after as well.
I think that, I think that'd be fine.
Okay. So I'll put you, Councilmember Troutman, for the Planning Commission liaison and I'll be the alternate.
Okay.
I believe that's everything.
Good.
I'm just gonna walk through. Oh, nope. Looks like we have, sorry. I don't know whose hand was up first.
Human Rights Commission hasn't been stated.
All right. Oh, you're right. Okay. So looks like I have Councilmember Supple as a liaison for Human Rights Commission and then Councilmember Troutman is the alternate. Is that correct? All right. Other commission liaison appointments that I missed, um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I just wanted to clarify where we landed on the 494 thing. So it sounded like the PAC you wanted both, uh, Councilmember Troutman and me for the 494 Corridor Commission. Is it Troutman primary and I'm alternate? Or are you just putting us as?
Yeah, let's do, let's do that. So Councilmember Troutman as primary and Councilmember Hayford O'Leary is alternate. Thank you. All right. Any, um, other comments or anything I missed? All right. Thank you so much. So now I will, uh, make the motion to designate the city council liaison appointments to various local, regional and state organizations and city boards as, and commissions, um, based on the discussion we just had now. Is there a second on the motion?
Yeah, I will second Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you. Mayor Regan Gonzalez has made the motion and it's been seconded by Councilmember Wayland. Any additional comments or questions from council members? Thank you, everyone, for struggling through that. I know there's a lot of amendments and they all are very different. Um, so, and thank you for adding this to your list. All right, um, Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Mayor Reagan Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Supple.
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Councilmember Wayland.
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you. The motion has been approved. All right. Um, the next item is the City Manager's Report. City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few announcements. Um, we have received quite a few complaints about snow plowing and, um, tagging and towing. And I just felt, um, actually it was Councilmember Supple's suggestion that I go over our procedures very quickly. When we declare an emergency, it's, um, when we get more than two inches of snow. Um, and then we make a decision about whether it makes sense to declare an emergency or not. Any vehicles cannot park on the streets when we declare an emergency, so our plows can clear the snow. We announce the emergency on TV, our website and social media.
We announce the emergency on TV, our website and social media. Our officers typically typically give time for people to move their cars before tagging and towing. They prioritize those areas where the plows can't get through. The extent of the tagging and towing depends on how busy the officer's shift is, so sometimes there's a lot and sometimes there's sometimes there's not. Uh we get complaints from those that have been ticketed and towed, but we also get a lot of complaints, sometimes even more from people who wish that we had done more ticketing and towing. Um we're regularly reviewing our procedures and we're trying to balance, you know, we are known for doing such a great job, well, our our public works workers are known for doing such a great job at clearing the streets. Um and we don't want to, we don't want that to degrade, but also we understand that some folks park on the street and they have a hard time finding alternate parking when we have snow emergencies. So we're we're currently piloting some options for refuge parking um for those folks and seeing how that goes and then we're gonna reconvene and learn from that and see if we can't find some better balance on that. Um and I I if anybody has any questions on that, I can take them or I can give you, go on to my brief COVID update.
Thank you, City Manager Rodriguez, um Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Um just just to say, I am excited at the idea of looking at our options, um having my first snow event as a council member and hearing from a couple constituents and I I am sympathetic for people who don't really don't have another option, I know particularly some of the folks in apartment buildings, they can't afford to rent an off-street spot, this is their only option and unfortunately our structure, it does gets our streets wonderfully clean and our our workers do a great job, but there is a cost and unfortunate cost is borne by residents who sometimes don't have other options, so I look forward to seeing what you come up with.
No questions, Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor, and um and thanks for that uh update, uh City Manager Rodriguez. Um like my one question, kind of along those lines, is the um ticketing and tagging. Um is it um if um, oh, excuse me here, oh, excuse me, son, Leander, you take that and take that out of the room. Sorry about that, folks, COVID, COVID living. But um but my 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 question is, I I I was trying to understand the tag the tagging or the 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 removing part if, because I then and I got a call or two about people that had been removed and I saw while I was walking on on Saturday, the streets had already been plowed, but people were being towed after the streets were plowed. And I was wondering, is that towing more punitive at that point? If you're towing somebody after the streets have already been plowed, it just seems punitive, it it seems maybe not intentionally, but punitive because it's not actually serving the purpose of removing the vehicle to shovel the or plow the street.
Uh Councilmember, I would have to get back to you on that, I know that we we contract for the service and I don't know if there was a miscommunication or about that. Um you know, we are, we're tagging and towing so that our plows can get through and we can clean the streets and there is no intent for it to be punitive, um but I would have to get details and get back to you on it. Certainly that is not the 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 intent.
Thank you, no, I appreciate you saying that and that helps me reflect that to to residents and it was something that I I observed while I was walking Saturday morning, it was after they had gone through that then they were they were coming the the following morning to remove vehicles. So that would be really helpful, um if we, even an email about that that I could share with folks, that'd be helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Whalen.
Um I was just going to ask and I apologize, I was double checking for myself. Um so you maybe already said this when I was looking, but in the options you listed of where it's noted or where it's posted, where folks can find out, um did you already mention we do have a an option to sign up for email and text alert? Um if folks scroll to the bottom of our of our website, had you mentioned that already?
I did not, Councilmember.
Okay, because I I know folks asked about that, um I know certainly in Minneapolis or St. Paul, there's like whole apps related to snow emergencies, we don't have that, but you can sign up um on the bottom of the city website for a text alert if you would like, um if you are someone who needs to park on the street typically.
Thank you.
Thank you, additional questions? All right, we can go to the, oh, Councilmember Troutman.
I just, I just want to be clear, just so I don't leave the city in a bad place, I don't actually know why those vehicles were being removed, there were multiple vehicles, but it could be for another reason that had nothing to do with the snow too, so I just want to put that out there, I don't I don't know, so just for the record.
I will get more details for you all. Okay, I just have a a brief update on COVID, uh we continue to see the case numbers going down. They're still high compared to the summer and the fall, so similar to the last time I reported. All three cities are on track to have lower numbers of hospitalizations and deaths in January compared to November and December, which are the most deadly of the pandemic to date. Um Bloomington Public Health continues to provide vaccinations to community members that are in that Phase um 1A group which is healthcare workers and first responders. And they're preparing to expand that, um right now, any delays are due to um the the availability of the vaccine. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, any questions or comments on the COVID report? All right, thank you very much, City Manager Rodriguez. All right, Councilmember Whalen, you want to do claims and payroll?
Sure can, um I will go ahead and move claims and payroll.
Councilmember Supple, I'll second.
Thank you, the motion has been made to move claims and payroll by Councilmember Whalen and seconded by Councilmember Supple. Um Analyst Martinez Gavina, could you please take the roll call vote?
Say, uh I'm sorry, Mayor Regan Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Supple?
Aye.
Councilmember Troutman? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Aye.
Councilmember Whalen?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Thank you, claims and payroll has been approved, hats off to hometown hits, let's start with Councilmember Supple.
Thank you, um well, um the city manager talked about the snow emergency and the vaccines, so that will shorten up what I have to say considerably. I wanted to just say thank you to all the responsible pet owners out there that are cleaning up after their pets when they're out there for walks and just remind people that we really do need to clean up after our pets and so thank you to everybody that's doing that. And that was all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Um I just wanted to share, um I don't know if it's been discussed with the full council before, but this uh Family Housing Fund is doing a project with Richfield um to look at typical Richfield houses and suggest how you could build or um like granny flats, little rental apartments attached to a single-family home. Anyway, I I signed up to be one of the subject properties, I have a typical Richfield story and a half, so they came out and measured it and just wanted to say I think it's such a cool project, um hopefully it will give ideas. Richfield did a cool guide in like the nineties of like how to renovate and expand a a typical mid-century house, so this is a similar concept but how to add additional housing for more families at the same time, so I'm excited to see what they come up with um out of my house and the several other houses who signed up at Richfield.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you, Mayor, um a few things, one, um wanted to say thank you to all of the folks who interviewed for our council or our commissions and boards. Um we were meeting with them on Saturday and it's just wonderful to talk with our um leaders, current and future um and in the community, so thank you to all of them. Um I just will lift up briefly and point people to the work sessions. Um if you are a transit user, we got an update on the Orange Line and some potential changes to uh routes that cross the Orange Line, so several of the the local routes in Richfield as well um and they're collecting some public input on that. Um and then we had several updates from our police department on the new body cameras just implemented yesterday. Uh the social worker who's now about five months in um in our department and also an update on the JCPP program. And then um the last thing I'll say is that uh we I don't know if a date has been set yet for the next work session, but we are, the council and HRA are kind of and city staff are in an ongoing conversation around inclusionary housing. Um and there's two community groups that are uh hosting sessions where they'll be gathering some input. Um RDAP, the Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership, um is meeting tomorrow night and then the Richfield Community Housing Team uh is meeting on Sunday night. Um so if you're interested in connecting with either of those groups um and providing some input uh or you can reach out directly to council or staff.
Thank you, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor, um I think the the only thing, one, I think even this as uh Councilmember Whalen mentioned, it's been been mentioned, but I just want to extend a special welcome to all our new staff members that we had a chance uh to to connect with and Patricia especially in her role as the liaison um is such a critical role and we've uh we've uh we've missed not having somebody in the role in the midst of of um this this pandemic, so we're really great to have that uh that role back and just incredible to hear all the work that she's doing. And um with a social worker with as our as our mental health needs have increased in our community, I'm really grateful that we have staff that's responding to that uh that need and to Bill Green, our new Equity Coordinator. Um he's a he's a great human being and I'm looking forward to uh community members to get to know him and I know he's looking forward to that work and people don't necessarily know this about uh about Bill Green, but he's actually Minnesota's fastest man. I won't say what his age group is, but he at his age group has set the state record uh just this last year for running hurdles, so in addition to all his other skills, he's uh he he remains uh a uh an incredible athlete, so welcome to Bill um and uh and to everybody, um we're we're glad to have them as a part of our team.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Troutman, I am really excited for how um we are building out our staff and really looking at um ways to connect through, you know, reforming our police department to building equity in the police department and and growing that but also across the whole, our whole city government and I'm just building out our staff to do that great work. Um I'll just do one final plug for Woodlake Nature Center, we're in the dead of winter and you know, it's hard to get physical activity right now, so Woodlake is a great way um to do that. I was just there a couple days ago and there was these cute little kids looking for treasures and there's backpacks that you, you know, activity backpacks you can rent out and snow shoes and cross-country skis, so we have such a great asset in Woodlake and you know, if you're looking for something fun and affordable to do, go um take your family to Woodlake Nature Center. Um and seeing we that we have no other business, wait, council, oh, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, you did go. You were second, okay, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss you. Um I will adjourn our meeting, thank you everyone, have a great night.